Good evening, welcome to the Board of Education meeting, September 16th, 2020. I'd like to ask our superintendent to lead us in the correct direction.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here is a change in the meeting agenda. K1, Addendum K1 regarding an employee that was discussed in this reflective session. I'd like to read a statement first. Thank you for joining us all tonight, whether it be in person or by tuning in virtually. Before we proceed with tonight's meeting agenda, I wanted to take a few minutes on behalf of my colleagues on board to thank everyone in our district for ensuring a smooth start to the 2021 school year. I know there was a tremendous amount of planning and preparation that went into reopening the schools, and we as parents and community residents greatly appreciate everyone's collective effort. I would also be remiss if I did not address Section 11's decision on Friday to delay the start of sports until January. This announcement was, in short, utterly disappointing and pivoted from our district's standpoint that sports could begin safely and in accordance with the new health measures this fall. In fact, our administrators have already begun to develop such plans and were working to ensure our program was ready to commence this September. Section 11's decision is one that we believe was rendered without giving adequate consideration to the input provided by Suffolk County Athletic Directors and School District. We realize that the delay in sports adds yet another stressor to the lives of our students, athletes, and withholds many opportunities for them. Please be assured that, as always, our district will continue to support and advocate for our students, athletes, coaches, and athletic programs. We stand behind you, and we do, we will do everything we can to expedite your return to sports. You love in the manner that is safe, secure, and best for all involved. As a district, we also understand and value efforts to proactively advocate for our students, athletes through many different outlets, and we respect those individuals' collective efforts. However, it is important that we do not encourage large gatherings of students and families that have the potential to violate physical distancing guidelines and place our students and families at risk. You have our commitment that we will strongly advocate for a reversal in decision by Section 11 and together with administration will be issuing a letter in support of athletics. Thank you. We recognize and respect the changing landscape that is presented in our efforts to reopen our schools. There are numerous health and safety essential priorities that transcend the traditional educational goals and expectations. We are deeply committed to the health, safety, and well-being of our students, staff, and families. In addressing the myriad challenges of reopening our schools in the midst of a pandemic, we have established a district-level COVID response team comprised of essential members of our staff with expertise and direct responsibility and supervision in the areas of health and safety, building and classroom sanitation, COVID reporting, DOH contact, and review and assessment of all safeguard protocols. The district-level team will be supported by establishing building liaisons that will have responsibility for providing updated information to the COVID response team regarding building level concerns, the ongoing testing and quarantine data, as well as ongoing sanitation of buildings and classrooms. This will be a dedicated team approach in close collaboration with the DOH and medical personnel to ensure partnerships and cross-functional efforts to mitigate potential additional risks of infection and transmission and allow our schools to remain open in a manner that preserves the health, safety, and educational needs and missions of our district. Thank you. The first item is for student recognition from myself. First, the Tocqueville Elementary students.
Good evening. To our Board of Education, Ms. Antonia, Ms. Kedisich, Mr. Carlson, Mr. Scanlon, and Dr. DeBressi. One of our district's core beliefs is the call of action for the entire Three Village community and to define our enduring character. You may remember last year when a Tocqueville student, now Delina's student, Lily Rosengard rallied all of her student council classmates into sewing pouches for marsupials injured or lost in the Australian wildfires. She inspired a call to action to help a community in need, which has gained another recognition from the New York State School Boards Association. Lily's continued philanthropic and volunteerism/activism continues to support the core beliefs divined by our district and our community. We are all very proud of Lily and cannot wait to see her next word. Thank you, Lily, and I'd also like to read this, Lily. The Three Village Central School District is a certificate of achievement awarded to you from the New York State School Board Association Champions of Change and its recognition for the elementary aid for the Australian wildfires. And we also have Kathy Romano from the New York State School Boards Association this evening.
Do you want me to just read the name of her current speaker? Do you want to speak?
You speak, sure.
Good evening. My name is Lily Rosengard. I am honored to stand here in front of you to accept this award for being a champion of change. It was an incredible team effort, cutting and sewing hundreds of pouches for the abandoned, burned, and displaced marsupials in Australia. The bushfires that ravaged Australia in 2019 were responsible for the lives of 75 innocent people and over 1 billion animals. This is a staggering number. I could not have completed this task without the help of my classmates, Girl Sketcher 897, teachers, especially Ms. Rachi, and principals Ms. Nivelle and Dr. Rinaldi. We collectively raised over $6,000 to help Wire's Rescue Foundation and donated several hundred joey pouches to babies in need. I am very happy to report that after many months, Australia bush is recovering and spreading new growth. I wish you all health and happiness as we begin a new school year. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Katherine Romano. I am a part-mate, a newly-elected Area 12 Director. If you all remember, Fred Langstaff was elected the President of New York State School Board, so I'm filling Fred's shoes. My theater is a little smaller than Fred's. I would be remiss if I did not wish you all condolences on the loss of Walter Zansler, who I serve on Eastern Suffolk BOCES Board with. Walter has always spoken highly of Three Village, so I feel like I have Walter with me as I make this presentation. Bob Schneider, who is the new Executive Director of New York State School Boards, and Fred and myself are very honored to recognize your program and your district. So for those of you who don't know anything about what School Boards does, we are the support network for the people who are sitting here. We run programming, we have conventions virtually, and I know you're electing your delegate tonight. And we really do stand up in Albany for the volunteer who helps to lead the district, which is the School Board trustees, who work in conjunction with their superintendents to really make a strong effort. And I cannot say enough to each of you for doing a yeoman's job from the time that we closed in March 5th or 12th through the opening of school today, because it has not been easy. None of the School Board trustees have found it easy. So kudos to all of you first. And then let me talk a little bit about the Champions of Change. We hear so many times of not-so-great news or controversial news from school boards and the school board seat. And New York State School Boards wanted to really acknowledge and recognize that positive efforts of districts and students and communities to really make change that is impactful within communities. The Champions for Change Award came a couple of years ago. And just to give you a sense of the scope, the members of this district had no idea this was coming until they got a notice from School Boards Association. So this is not an award that you apply for. This is an award that people find you for. So, young lady, you are an awesome fellow. New York State School Boards looks at the news clips in something we call Eclipse every day for a good story, and also does about 300 visits with schools, school districts, and school leaders. So you need to know that of all of that group, in Suffolk County, there are only four districts who got awards from January to now. That's a big deal. I will also tell you that as I drove over with the orange sun, knowing that that orange sun is hazed because of the wildfires in California, Oregon, and Washington, that to know and to care about something that's so far away from you is an unusual characteristic of our students. I happen to have family that lives in Australia, that lives in Melbourne. So they knew the wildfires we were calling. This is a great honor not only for the student, but for your district, for the staff who supported by making 3D beads using technology, for the other students who had a read-a-thon, the ones who were involved in selling bracelets and doing all sorts of charitable works. It's an honor for this district, and so you get this banner. Come on up that way. Somehow we'll socially distance and I'll read the banner.
Is it dressed here?
Yes. It's a biggie. And it's rather pretty. So you'll have to negotiate with the superintendent. The banner reads Champions of Change for Kids, Three Village Central School District, Board of Education, Elementary Student Aid for Australian Wildfires. This recognition is yours. Congratulations. It's awkward. I don't know what to do.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next group to be recognized are five junior students from Ward Melville High School. During the spring and summer of 2020, these young women joined together to provide tutoring services to students in our district. The exceptional group of students known as the Teletutors are here this evening to offer their fees that they collected during their time of service to our students to the food cantries of the Three Village School District. Tonight, they will present a check to our district in support. And I had the wonderful opportunity to meet with these young women last Friday, and they shared with me some of their inspirational experiences. And I thought it would be wonderful for the Board of Education to hear directly from them about some of those experiences that they had working with their younger counterparts in our district. So if we can, maybe one at a time to come up to the podium and just introduce yourself and tell a little story like you did to me when we met with Ms. Canestro, I think would be just wonderful, and I think the audience would like to hear. So I don't know who would like to start. Anybody who wants to start, sure.
Hello, my name is Tricia, and I'm a junior at Ward Melville. And I started this group in June, once the school year ended. And all of us just finished sophomore year, and we really wanted to apply ourselves somehow since the school year ended. And we were thinking, how do we do that? We wanted to give back to our community, since we all know everyone was struggling through these uncertain times since March. And tutoring really gave us a goal to work towards throughout the summer, and as well as our students. We all worked together through the summer, and it really helped us with stability through these times. So it was a really great experience.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sarah Murphy. I tutored most of the kindergartners. It was a really great experience. I loved it so much. I look forward to it every single morning. And I really did this to help transfer kindergartners and help them, if they were choosing the remote way, to help them be able to sit behind a computer and not feel antsy. I became very close with a lot of them. One of them actually wanted me to be his best friend, which I thought was very sweet and very cute. So yeah, I became very close with all of them. And I look forward to just tutoring them all day.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sharnija, and I'm also a junior at Ward Melville. I tutored this ninth grader in geometry, and it was a really nice way to spend my summer because personally, when I took geometry in ninth grade, I really enjoyed it. And I loved trying and learning new things, and I felt that this was such a great way for me to do that and spend my summer. And it really made me step out of my comfort zone, and it made me grow not only as a person, but as a team with my friends.
Hi, my name is Kazneen, and tutoring has been a wonderful experience, not only because I've been able to help other kids in our community, but because I got to know them, and it was really refreshing to see how enthusiastic and passionate they were about learning. I mostly tutored in math, and growing up, that was one of my favorite subjects. But you know, as I went to high school, it got more challenging, and it got pretty frustrating at times. But seeing how much they loved it and how much fun they were having, and honestly, how much fun I was having teaching them and making fun notes for them, it reignited my love for math, and overall, I'm really grateful for this experience. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Katya. I'm the last, hopefully not the least. So yeah, I'm last of the juniors. I actually tutored all ages. I tutored from kindergarten, seventh grade, and a ninth grader. So it's really interesting to see all the different ages and how comfortable they were, like sharing different other ideas, how comfortable they were on screen, and how they just communicated to me. I don't think anyone else mentioned, but a key part of our program was the fact that it was donation-based, and we did this so that families who had financial struggles wouldn't feel left out. And we really wanted to reach out to everyone and make sure that everyone felt had the chance to be part of this.
That is truly wonderful, and I know that they have a check that they will be donating this evening to Mr. Carlson on behalf of them to the food pantry of Three Village. And Mr. Bernhard has some certificates for each of these young women, and we'll ask them to come up, and we will give you certificates, and we'll take a, we'd love to take a picture with you. That's okay.
Great job. Thanks very much.
Dr. DeBressi wants to offer you a job in the West.
I just want to add one thing to you who are part of this group. You know, for us on the board, as we watched, you know, in the spring especially of last year, when it seemed like the wheels were coming off of things, and a lot of the institutions around which you students have based your lives, I just find it, you know, for all of us, we find it very heartening and very encouraging that when we consider the challenges that we base as a society, that when those challenges reached you, you stepped up, you got yourselves organized, you assessed your strengths, and responded with compassion, with gratitude for what you have, with strength, and with determination. And you know, to me, you reflected the very finest values of our community. I'm very appreciative to you all.
As a follow-up to Mr. Quinright, despite the challenges of the pandemic, these students found a way to make a difference in the world, and they've dedicated their effort and energy to others. These selfless acts of kindness and innocence are commendable, and they exemplify a future that we embrace with great pride. They are truly our heroes of tomorrow, and we thank you. We would like to tell our students, if you would like to leave at this point, you are certainly welcome to do that, and we know you get up very early in the morning. However, if you would like to stay for the remainder of the meeting, you are more than welcome to do so. We won't be insulted. Moving on to our public participation of the 30 minutes. Moving on to our public participation of the 30 minutes in length. We have the first participant is Robert Chabelski.
Can you repeat your name?
Robert Chabelski.
Good evening, Three Village Board of Education. My name is Robert Chabelski, and I am the father of Hunter Chabelski, a 12th grade senior at Ward Melville High School. I am here this evening for many reasons, on behalf of my wife Anne Marie and my child Hunter. First, we want to thank the district for getting him to where he is now with loving stage and performing. It all started with Dan Hayes casting Hunter in the sixth grade as Willy Wonka at The Mount for their first production. Our district excels with music and other arts. However, a drama-focused career and technical education, CTE, program is not a pathway offered to our students. The Long Island School of Arts, or LISA, is an incredible BOCES high school program in Nassau County, where students across Long Island can attend for half a day and receive high school credits and disciplines focusing on passions. While embraced by diversity and culture, students are immersed in thriving learning environment led by professionals in particular fields of interest. Teachers are there to help them expand their knowledge and skill and work with them to develop their portfolios, audition skills, and provide invaluable guidance in preparation for college and career drama. No public high school can offer this concentrated instruction in drama like LISA can. Long Island High School for the Arts, or LISA, has recently been approved by New York State to offer three arts-focused career technical education, or CTE, programs. Hunter wants to pursue this drama CTE program at LISA. Although Ward Melville has experienced teachers and wonderful classes that support the arts education, it is our feeling that the students who enter LISA have similar needs as Hunter. Their drama curriculum is intense and offers courses and preparation that Ward Melville does not provide and cannot compare to a half-day drama-driven program. LISA is available to support secondary goals. Overall, the Long Island High School Arts offers students equal access to quality learning that is not present in Three Village as a CTE program in drama. We have concerns about the current educational plan in place for our son Hunter. In turn, we are requesting a different learning environment at the BOCES Long Island High School, School for Arts, or LISA, where he would be placed with like-minded individuals and be recognized for their talent and inspiration, enthusiasm, and potential in drama through a rigorous program. Focusing on students and innate gifts, I am not asking the School Board to take one seat away from another BOCES program in favor of LISA, but I am asking that you add another BOCES seat for Hunter. Hunter first toured LISA three years ago, when we were told there would be a battle to get the district to agree to send him. However,
Excuse me, it's time is up. I'm so sorry. Thank you.
Good evening. Certainly a tough time coming back after such a long break, and you know, we have a lot of different things to kind of discuss tonight. I'd like to talk a little bit about the pandemic response and kind of where we fit into safety and security with that. As always, a very important component of the district's safety and security is mental wellness, not only for the students, but for the staff as well. A target hardening, emergency response, technology, infrastructure protection, and compliance as well, as we go through this very quick report. So the pandemic response, all the employees in the district were required to look at some pandemic response items in their annual SAVE training, which is mandated for all the employees. We had to add a section so that every single employee in the district had to log in and physically look at our pandemic response as it relates to students and staff. So that was very important to us. The team approach in balancing pandemic protocols with our robust security posture. And I know I had a couple of parents reach out to me recently that were concerned that we lost our security by going through some of the pandemic procedures. And I know Principal Bernhard's adherent, and him and I have met and spent a lot of time together to kind of keep that tight security that we are expected, that I'm really, you know, in favor of and work hard to balance that with the health and safety of the students. So that's a very So that's a very, very, very important thing and and actually Bill and I uh spent quite a bit of time together both at the high school, here at the administration building, coming up with a way to kind of collaborate and keep both kind of parties happy in this because it it is it is very, very important. The 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 parents that said they listen, the door's wide open now, anybody can walk in, but we had to look at all of that because we have the movement now between classes outside the building. Yeah, that'd be that creates a little bit of a challenge for me. Um we had students that were kind of drifting away from the back of the school. Now with Bill right away, we worked out a plan to keep those students onto the concrete patio in the back and not allow them to go to cars and 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 drift around the campus. So one of the other things that that I get involved in and and I I think it's very important that the superintendent and the board set up this this task force is trying to monitoring staff and student compliance. That's one part of it. We're really working hard. It's a team approach from the food service worker to the security guard, to to the teachers, to the administrators to get out on the floor. I talk about the the principals to get, I know they're very busy, but I talked to Bill, we we kind of talked to his assistant principals, you know, when they get a couple of minutes, get out on the floor. It's like a it's like the manager of a Macy's. They have to get out on the floor and see how their store looks. Get them out, help us out a little bit because I was in the hallway of the high school, there were a couple of kids drifting down, nose showing, hey, listen, can you just pull it up? No problem. Compliance has been great in in that in that respect. Sanitizing and disinfecting. Well, we know that the two are different. Uh we 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 should all know in this room and it's 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 public information that every night, every night, a team goes around the building and uses basically a fogging device and disinfects all occupied areas. A big challenge, I know you we had a resident talk about what we could do in between classes. It is complicated. We did put a cleaning solution spray bottle in every single occupied space with something called Oxiver, like a peroxide-based cleaner, disinfectant, very effective. That is available in every single classroom for the teachers or student volunteers if we had some that want to do that, do that as well. We don't, we 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 don't have enough staff and 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 I think Jeff, uh Principal Carlson could verify, but we don't have enough staff to get into every single classroom between between classes. And I I know, I know, I'm listening to you and I'm really kind of into it. I know another school district said that and it it turns out that they're not doing it, they just couldn't do it. It sounded really, really good and if we can figure something out, I'm thinking about it as I'm sitting back behind the podium today, I'm thinking about what we can do in the task force to look at that. So it is definitely on the, it's definitely on the thing. Medical response. So everybody in the room should know, we have two locations in every building that basically, simple terms, basic nurses' office, daily health needs, secondary location for staff or students that may have to that may that may have some signs or symptoms that could be be related to the pandemic, well, they will go be evaluated further and hopefully in the in the case of the students, they get picked up immediately by a parent regarding and and taken for further medical training. We're in the process of uh really a robust, we have to, we have a robust reporting procedure that we have to do every single day for COVID and we're actually looking to to enhance our staff to focus on that one particular item and that's all part of the task force as well. Mental wellness. You hear me talk about it every year? Very, very important. So suicide prevention, now we have this, now we have this other, this other variable where we have not been in school for a long time. I think things happen, you know, we 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 know that there was internationally more drug use uh in this off time. I'm concerned about that. Suicide prevention, uh difficult for us and you know, I I I actually read an article and I was thinking about the mask, so we wear the masks all the time. It's it's sometimes very hard to tell somebody's demeanor or how they feel with this covering a lot of your face, a lot of facial expressions that we don't get to see in the hallway of the of the high school or in the or with the smaller children. Uh bullying, uh it is a problem. Cyberbullying, I you know, I talked about that in definitely a few different presentations. Cyberbullying is an issue. Just the other day, we received something, something came through that we're we're doing a little investigation on already, so it wasn't quick. This stuff is happening very quickly. Targeted violence prevention, basically thirteen core points that we look at in the district. Changes in academic grades, changes in appearance, uh changes in maybe giving away important items, a check, as as small as change in diet with the food service workers. Very important for us, we look at all these things, our threshold in Three Village, I should be in every single school and I know I work with Jonathan on this, very, very low. We see a problem, we send the team in to work on it. We actually picked something up today at one of the middle schools and all it was was some something that on a social media page, we could see behind the 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 student's social media and we could see something in the background, just didn't look right. Already working an investigation on that, just today. Transgender and non-conforming students, very important to us, right? Bottom line is that we treat everybody with respect. Uh we have places in the buildings where transgender or or students that are non-conforming, that don't identify as a male or a female, where they can go during the day. Certainly something that we deal with and we know that we have cases that we work on and it's really important that that child is not ostracized and is treated with respect like everybody else in the building. This is security, uh the default lockout thing, so that's that goes to the high school a little bit. So what we've done with Principal Bernhardt, we've worked hard on this, so when those, when the students move from the in the outside of the building from class to class, which is something that uh we're promoting, again, to keep physical distancing, you know, reducing the 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 amount of people in the hallways, they're monitored by security guards and other staff and once those students go out one door, that door is secure. That's important to me because I I want that to fall, at the full lockout like we've always had here, like that I think by now, everybody in this community is used to. Security vestibules, uh we 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 are not allowing visitors in the building. The post is someone can get to the inside, it's in the vestibule. There's cases that if you want to meet with somebody, you want to pick something up, well, you can get into the vestibule, you can't come into the building. If an administrator wants to meet with a parent and the weather's conducive, they'll do it outside. If they want to meet in the vestibule, they'll do it outside. Otherwise, you have to go through a very stringent medical screening process that all of us has, that that work in the buildings and the students must go through every single day. We do have bullet resistant film. Been talking about that for a while, but it's important that when we do change uh windows or redesign buildings that we are you are installing that bullet resistant film. There's no such thing as bulletproof, but there is bullet resistant. The automated hallway locks, they're in all the secondary buildings, they're installed. It was a lot of work to take out a lock set out of an old door from, some cases from the sixties, to put this automated lock in. They're moving to Arrowhead next and then they're going to continue through the elementary schools. I just saw the 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 kind of like the timeline today, it looks like by early November, we'll be able to turn that system on. And I've been talking about that for a while, took a lot of time to get funding right, you know, we're using Smart Schools money, which is money that was given basically a promissory note to this district from the state. Uh what that'll do is when that lockdown system is activated, those doors will automatically lock. Teacher does not have a thumb on the key, door's locked, secure. It also provides us with a little better control of doorways as well. Lockdown drills. So nationally, we have to do four lockdown drills a year. And and a lot of things that that you might have thought we we didn't have, we don't have to do because of COVID, there's a lot of things that help with safety that are that that state that we have to do, like fire inspections, like daily fire safety checks and lockdown drills. So the lockdown drills are going to go this way, so you heard it from me. We're going to activate the system. It's important that I know that the horns and all the stuff that happens, the cops get notified, all of that has to work. But the students are going to stay in the classroom now. The risk, the risk is, you know, we don't want to pile in on a lockdown drill and everybody's in this room. If we wanted to hide somewhere, there's a, there's a room right off here that we keep the chairs in, we could probably go into there, there's places we can go. You know, everybody, uh Mr. Visser was principal of Murphy, we we picked locations where the students and staff could go so they couldn't be seen. We can't really do that because we're really not going to maintain that physical distancing and I'm a little concerned about. The students are going to stay in their seats during the lockdown drill, they're going to remain quiet and the teacher, I hate the teacher to hell, the teacher's going to talk about where in that particular classroom those students could go. And secondly, shut up your, mute your cell phones, be quiet. They're going to talk a little bit about what you're doing in a lockdown drill. And then I you don't have, I gotta, I gotta tell you, I like doing the drills, I'm hoping that when we spin around to the springtime, maybe, or if next year, we can continue with our drills we normally do. Thanks to the board and the administration. We've got a little extra security guard coverage. We we did that because of, it it came out right away with the parents drop off and pick up a personal vehicle. So I I was with Principal Keen, had joined us a couple of days now, working on that, making a couple of changes. We got a lot of parents bringing their kids to school and picking them up, personal vehicle, big deal. Got another couple, thanks to Jeff and the administration, got a couple extra positions Smart Schools update. So we're using our last cash of state Smart Schools money now for the lockdown, the cameras and some other things that we're doing. Uh we do have a real, it's automated lockdown notification alert system, it's going to be better than it was with the Smart Schools money, excited about that. Uh we still are doing ID scanning with a database interface, which means basically if you do come into the building, the license goes into a scanner, the driver's license is interfacing with a sexual predator database, which is a lot stronger than the one you see on the internet, that's really good for us. And we have direct communication with the police department. So today, just today, I was here at a nine one one accidental, well, we didn't know it was accidental, call comes in from the high school, Bill, right? What, an office, was it an office, Bill, today? Office?
No, the bathroom, bathroom next to Amy.
They changed, we changed a little bit of how we dial it, the inside phone, so the the staff member accidentally dialed on, but we didn't know that. So we see that this call is coming from Wood Melville High School. Right away, everybody swings into action and if you were listening, the police officer, the SRO actually came onto our channel, our radio channel, which is awesome, and actually acknowledged that it was a accidental. So they're on our radio. We don't have to have their million-dollar radio system, they're on ours. Really, really great. So we have direct communication with the police. Emergency response. So right now, we are in the process of putting together our, we put a district-wide plan together every July first, that gets approved by the board, that's in place. Now our building-specific plans are being done and they're required, I have to have them up up the hallway by uh October, in October. We're putting them together now. Those have a lot of really neat stuff, what we should do and now, this year, required by regulation, I did put in a pandemic response addex into each one of our individual building plans. It basically kind of limits what what data we have on the web, I put a little more, some more confidential stuff in there. Enhance all hazards training. Just before we had to stop in March, we were ready to do an incident command class here. So we're going to try to get, try to figure out some way to maybe do smaller groups to get that going. Very important for new administration that they're aware of how to handle things in an emergency. Inter agency collaboration with our two responding fire and EMS departments, right? We deal with Setalkin and Stony Brook. North country, this building and Mount are in the Stony Brook Fire area, the rest of the building's Setalkin. Excellent collaboration with them. They're on our radio, we're on their radio, we communicate, we can get an ambulance instantly or a medic to any location right away, very important. We have a couple of apps available. One is the Rave Tanaka, the white one on the left, hit one of those buttons, things happen. Police get notified, fire pump gets notified, responders in the building get notified. The other one on the right, crisis manager, uh there's little icons on there, so if you press the one that says EpiPen, which is the on the right side, it tells you how to administer an EpiPen, whether it's the adult version or the EpiPen junior, a lot of neat stuff on there for our staff as well. So technology infrastructure, really important and I I I team up with 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 IT on this. Uh we we always remind our staff about uh handling incoming emails. Uh one improper click in this district could be catastrophic for us. So we're always working with an NRI P leader is in the corner as well. Introduction into our network of One Bed and Software Max, I go, we we talk about it with staff, but I want the the board to know that we are on top of that too. We're very careful on what type of applications and software that we allow into our system. Vendor verification, important to us. I just talked to Deputy Superintendent Carlson about this, the the copy machine guy. We're big on making sure that the person that's coming into our building is from that particular company. Think about the copy machine, nothing easier than open a copy machine, pull out some part, sit there with a laptop, anybody that passes that copy machine is going to say that's the copy machine repair person, but when in fact, they have plugged into our network because all of our print is like every other place there is in the in the country is all networked together. Compliance, the top one's been really interesting, extensive background investigation. So uh I team up with Assistant Superintendent Gary, uh Dr. Gary Dreski on background checks. We have done, because of changes in staffing related to the pandemic and other things, we have done a tremendous amount of background checks. It's extensive here. It's, it's really four layers deep. So for the people that are in the room and the board members, when we put somebody, when somebody's on your agenda to hire and they've been cleared by Dr. Gary's office, they are cleared, we do very, very well with that.
Jack, how long does that process take?
It it depends on the feedback that I get through the software. A lot of that, a lot of the data that I have to plug in is based on how good the data the people give us. If they don't give me a good phone number for a prior employer or they don't give me dates on their college education or their college time, it's very difficult. We have to do a little bit of homework on that. Some can come back very, very quickly, so it can take a little bit of time. And we also change the levels of how deep we go, you know, if I, if we, if we're going to hire somebody that has the ability to get into the network operations center or has a key like I have that can kind of get everywhere, that person, we, I'm really deep on that person because they have a lot, there's a lot of potential issues. We really, you know, we really focus on a lot of the job as well. But we had to get a lot of people in place very, very quickly. I I I will just say this, that Dr. Gary's office did an amazing job recently, we got all this together and we pretty much have everybody taken care of, as he knows.
Can I just ask you a question?
Go ahead.
So you said that it's extensive, four-layer, and it depends how long it takes on the information you receive. Wouldn't it, in in my mind, by the time it got to you, all those, all those, you know, addresses or dates or what have you, wouldn't that all be taken care of before that into you? So you do get complete information, you could just run it? Or is it being held up because you have to? Can you explain that?
I'm not going to speak for 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 the doctor's office, but the, if I do have that, it does go quicker. I do have to do a little bit of my own homework, I know his office is very, very busy. Uh it, yes, if I have great information, we actually just changed a little bit of our procedure uh just the other day because things like the highest achieved education level, it's great when I have a copy of a diploma in my hand. It makes it a lot easier for me to plug in dates and verify that that someone's graduated from a particular level, whether it's a GED up to, you know, a doctor, it's very, very important. There is a little bit of a breakdown there, I'm not going to lie to you. We try to work hard and I know we're working really hard to to do that better. And you know, in a perfect world, I would love to have great information, but again, when someone makes a mistake on a phone number and we can't get a hold of the employee, we find out one, you know, a number's off, then I gotta kind of do some research, go deep on the web, see what the number is for that particular business, it it does, it does take a little bit of time. And we had a lot of people to put through. Uh we take care of annual PES, right? Public Employee Safety Health. We are not controlled by OSHA here, we are controlled by PES, which is part of the New York State Department of Labor. Uh we talked about We talk about training. We get training out. Some of that training is done on GCN, virtual website training. I got some new custodial people and it's important because they're a key element in our pandemic response. They're, they're going to be coming in. There's some, I guess they're getting approved, probably approved this evening. And they're going to come in and we're going to make sure that they have their annual training in things like chemical safety, rights to know, what are pathogens and things like that. Because, you know, some people aren't medically trained as much as some of us are and they really need to learn some of those things like we talked about from before. The inspection, we did our 2020 fire inspection. Another interesting item. Ours was due in March. March and April, right in the middle of shutdown time. You would say, you'd say, well, maybe the state or the governor said, you know what, you could kind of hold off on that a little bit? No, had to be done. We got it done. We did, we always find deficiencies. It's a big operation here, but those deficiencies are quickly mitigated by our maintenance people. All of that reporting was done on schedule. And what's very important to understand from the board point of view, that's what drives our certificate of occupancy to occupy a building solely based on the fire inspection. If we get the fire inspection stuff taken care of, that's how we get our CO to operate, no other way. And that CO is important. Without that certificate of occupancy, we cannot unlock the door. Our inspection this year is in February. It moves one month earlier every year. So I tell you now that we're going to be, you know, talking about this, we're going to start in February. Compliance with asbestos. Hazard and Emergency Response Act, always concerned about, very little left. We've been, you've been gracious. I know it's, it's an expensive thing, but we've been removing small amounts of asbestos here. Every building's got it. So we're not, you know, immune. We have very little asbestos building materials left in our district, which is a great thing. Lead in drinking water. So we had to test all our water fixtures, which we did. They're all labeled. They're all documented. We use J.C. Broderick and outside vendor to do that with us. And all our reporting goes up to New York State and we are all complying with that as well. We talked about DAS, right? Save and transgender updates. That's done. This year, we did it virtually using an online training program. Normally I do that direct delivery to all 2,300 people or so, Dr. Gary. We get, we get, I get to talk to every single person in this district. This year, we did it online. And a little bit, you know, we are right on top of the new sexual harassment things. You know, we have our yearly refresher in that as well. So one of the things I just want to finish with is the board here in this district has been so supportive. And amazingly, because you put my schedule onto the webpage, I started receiving questions like we were receiving for the last couple of board meetings. And I gotta tell you, the feedback's been positive. You know, I got people that were concerned with the security. I talked about that earlier. And then I got people that are really concerned with how we handle, how are we handling the pandemic. I will tell you, I think Task Force is awesome idea. I think that's going to be important to us on how we look at some of the things that we put in place already. We have, I think, a solid plan, but there's always room for improvement. We had no idea what that first day at Ward Melville High School was going to look at. And I think in just a couple, in just by mid, by, I guess, a day after we started, right? Am I right, Bill? We kind of looked at it quickly, did a little revamping and, you know, I think it's positive. We're getting, we're getting positive feedback. Middle schools, the junior highs look good. Elementarys, I got a walkthrough. The other day, the kids are doing very, very well. They're doing, the physical distancing is like pretty good. I mean, it's, you know, it's hard to get those little kids to understand that they have to be further apart. So again, I want to thank the board for their support, to all the programs that I'm involved in. I kind of, my circles kind of touch a lot of different things here in the district. Lot, a lot of activity, very, very busy. But again, thank you for your support and I'll answer any questions you might have.
Does anybody have any questions? Mr. Lawrence, I would just like to thank you for a very thorough presentation. As always, you continue to keep the district updated with the state insecurity regulation. I know during this, in certain times, you were receiving many calls from parents and community members, but they've also reached out to me. And I want to thank you for always taking the time to respond to their calls and emails. I think that's really important. And thank you for being part of the new task force. I think that you can be an asset to the task force and, you know, I think I can speak for all of us that we feel confident and, you know, glad that you're on that team.
Thank you for your support. Any questions? Good.
Any questions? Well, thank you.
Thank you.
So we move on to items for board discussion. We're going to go over the 2021 district goals. I know we have some items that have been added on. To develop and sustain professional development for teachers and technology-based support programs for students and families in order to implement a remote model of instruction which aligns with MISA standards and district curriculum K-12 in all academic areas and subjects. And assess student learning gaps and monitor and provide social and emotional learning needs in particular with regards to COVID-19. That is listed under student achievement and engagement. Does anybody have any comments on that? Would like to add anything? For state insecurity, continue the additional protocols that have been implemented in response to the COVID-19 pandemic to address the safety of students and staff, including cleaning and disinfecting of all buildings in accordance with the TDC DOH and MISA guidelines. Is there any questions or comments to that? Budget development, begin refreshing reserves and fund zones that were used to meet the financial needs of the district during the COVID-19 pandemic. And then the community engagement. This one, the, do you have this one or this is one I just hear?
No, this is me.
This is the new one, right? Establish a district-wide task force on anti-racism and social justice and affiliated building anti-racism and social justice committee. So that would be for community engagement. Any questions? Anybody have any suggestions or any add things they want, you know, any others they'd like to add on? No? Okay. Want to accept it? Okay, so we want to accept the goals for 2021. Do you have a motion? Mr. Vizel? Ms. Gish, on favor? Substitution, great. So move. This item is the E, appointment of voting delegate for NISPA annual business meeting. This is part of the conference, the convention that's going on in October. And I'd like to suggest I think Gish, the Vice President, she is also going to be voting delegate in the pair.
Yes.
Okay. Do I have any motion?
So move.
Dr. Chairman, Mr. Vizel, on favor? Opposed? Substitution. All good. Motion passes. Thank you. Congratulations, I think. Okay, establishment, F, establishment of the 2021 tax levy.
The recommendation is to establish the tax levy at the amount that was included in our budget information, which is an increase of 1.96% and complies with the tax cap. We don't have the assessed values from the town of Smithtown yet, so we don't know the change to tax rates. Soon as that information comes in, I will forward it.
Do I please have a motion? Ms. Gish, Mr. Vizel, on favor? Opposed? Substitution? Motion passes. G, approval of contract with outside service provider for special education services?
This is just a, one of the outside providers who uses for special education services.
Okay. Mr. Corvitz, second? Ms. Gish, on favor? Opposed? Substitution? Motion passes. Approval of contract, approval of special education tuition contract H? Do you have any questions for that? Ms. Gish, Mr. Corvitz, on favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Except, I, acceptance of donation.
We have one donation on the agenda. It's a donation of $1,600 in gift cards from Meals on Wheels to our food pantry. But then, as we heard earlier this evening, the Ward Melville tele tutors left a check for $735 also for the food pantry.
Very nice. Thank you. Motion? Yes. Ms. Gish, Mr. Corvitz, on favor? Opposed? Substitution? Motion passes. Declaration of surplus equipment?
We have some communications equipment from the Sotoket Elementary School that is in unusual condition and also an old golf cart that was used by the Ward Melville High School athletics program.
Move forward. So moved.
Mr. Corvitz, Ms. Gish, on favor? Opposed? Substitution? Motion passes. Resolution recalling access special education aides?
Yes, this is a resolution recalling several of our special education aides who were accessed in June.
So moved.
Mr. Corvitz, Ms. Gish, on favor? Opposed? Substitution? Motion passes. Then we have an addition, addendum K1, approval stipulation agreement between three of those central school districts regarding the employees we spoke about in executive session. Do you have a motion, Mr. Vizel? Ms. Gish, on favor? Opposed? Substitution? Motion passes. Personnel matters, one instructional?
Okay.
Nothing?
So moved.
Mr. Corvitz, Ms. Gish, on favor? Opposed? Substitution? Motion passes. L2, non-instructional? Mr. Corvitz, Ms. Gish, on favor? Opposed? Substitution? Motion passes. M, recommendation of committee on special education for the date? Mr. Corvitz, Ms. Gish, on favor? Opposed? Substitution? Motion passes. And N, recommendation on committee for preschool specialization for the date, stated? Mr. Corvitz, Ms. Gish, on favor? Opposed? Substitution? Motion passes. Information on items of interest? Does anyone have any information? So we're done. We'll move on to our second piece of public participation of the 30 minutes in length. Three minutes, perfectly simple. We have Courtney Leonard?
Leonard.
Leonard, sorry.
So I know we only have three minutes, so I will be brief. I wanted to thank you for hearing me speak today. I have three daughters in the district. They're all in elementary school. Two are in Sotoket and one is in Nassau Cave. She's in IG program, sixth grade. That is actually why I'm here. I have a couple of questions that maybe you can clarify for me. On the school's reopening plan, one of the things that was posted was that all elementary school students who are remote will follow a modified schedule. And then it says that a teacher will be assigned to deliver that remote instruction. At no time was the IG separate from that or mentioned during that in the opening plan. Another thing was that there was a letter on August 26th that stated that you appropriately supported the individual decisions that families were making, whether to go in person or to go remotely. We decided as a family that we would send our daughter and she would go in person. She is taking all the risks of going in person. However, she is not getting any of the reward. Her class is the only one in the district that does not have a separate remote teacher. Her teacher is doing both in-person and remote students at the same time, which has been very distracting for the in-person students. She has come home every day upset, frustrated with a headache. If we wanted her on a Chromebook all day, we would have kept her home and she would have gone solely remote. She is in a group project right now with remote students. Everybody here has mentioned at some point the mental well-being of our students and how the social and emotional facet of COVID has kind of taken over. So as a parent, I'm really at a loss. I don't understand why there's one elementary school class in the entire district that is following this. And unfortunately, she's a part of that class.
Can you, can you just repeat what, what that, this won't count against your time, so just.
It's good.
But just, just repeat what.
I tried to speed her in.
Yeah.
You got a whole minute.
I didn't understand what you said was, just repeat the part that you said was happening that was the only school in the district.
So basically, her sixth grade IG class, her teacher is teaching the in-person students and the remote student.
A lot of teachers were doing that.
No, secondary level.
Oh, secondary. Oh, I'm sorry.
K through 10. It was actually stated that that would not happen. And there are three IG classes. And her class is the only one that does not have a remote teacher. And what we have found from the in-person students is that it is 100% affecting their education and they are at risk and yet there is no reward. And so I was wondering why there is no separate remote IG teacher for that sixth grade remote class.
Mr. Leonard? I'm sorry. Mr. Leonard, if you can give us your information, give us Mrs. Scanlon, Mrs. Pettis, they'll take a look at it and it will be addressed.
Okay, because I did talk to Mr. Scanlon already. And I still am at a loss as to why their class is unique and does not have what we as in-person families thought our children would be provided. One of the unique aspects of our gifted program, our totally gifted program, is that the teachers who have been teaching in that program for a long period of time have a special certification to be able to teach. So we wanted to make sure that both the students who were in each of the programs will continue to receive that level of instruction by people who were, by teachers who were certified with that specific certification. Mr. Prinzo, who is the, one of the IG teachers for sixth grade. Right now, I'm understanding there are seven students currently in class. I think the numbers are close. And maybe 14 students, is that correct?
It's nine and 18.
Nine and 18, nine and 18. And so what we were trying to do is keep continuing for those students with a teacher who is certified in that area. However, Mr. Scanlon has discussed with me some of the concerns that have been brought forward. And we will definitely take a look at it. And we appreciate you coming and speaking with us this evening. But we will have a conversation about that. Again, we were looking as a district to make sure that we were delivering on the program and the program with fidelity. And I really appreciate you considering this because one of the biggest facets has been the emotional well-being. And if our children who are in person are on a Chromebook all day and their interaction is through a computer, then the in-person is taken away from them. And I'm really concerned for those in-person students. And as we all know, every single in-person day is a gift. I'm a teacher and I wish our district was all day, every day, the way you guys have done it. I am so impressed. And we're trying to emulate Three Village. We're not there yet in the neighboring school. I just want every choice that each family has made to be honored. And I understand it's probably very difficult for you on your end because the IG is so unique. But at the same time, every child's needs need to be catered and they need to be with people, not on a Chromebook. Thank you. We respect that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes our That concludes our public criticism. Does anyone have, want, have anything to say? Any comment? Any additional questions? Thank you. We're gonna, the board is going to go back into the criticism session. We don't have time to listen. Miss Gesh? Mr. Correia? All in favor? Thank you.